Let's call the order, the Township of Ocean Planning Board Meeting for January 21st, 2021. Roll call.
Okay, so.
No, we need roll call, Amy. You have to go, you have to unmute.
Every time.
There you go.
DeFilia?
Here.
Mr. Duffy?
Here.
Dr. Fisher?
Here.
Ms. Close? Mr. Siano?
Here.
Mr. Weinstein?
Here.
Dr. Di Benedetto?
Here. Salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag. The notice requirements for the open public meeting law for this meeting has been satisfied. A copy of the notice has been sent to Patrick Park Press and Coaster and filed in the Ocean Township Clerk on July 27th, 2020. Board policy, no new cases will be started after 10:30 PM and no new testimony taken after 11:00 PM. Resolution memorializations, Logan Community LLC, Block 137 Lots 4, 5, and 32, 1109 Logan Road, Ocean, Site Plan Approval, Bulk Variance Approved.
Mr. Chairman, that's been adjourned until the February meeting. That's a request of Ms. Krimko.
I'm sorry, Sandy, what did you say?
It's being adjourned until the February meeting per request by Ms. Krimko.
Okay. New cases, Giovanni Scarpino, Block 9 Lots 6.11 and 7.11, 65 Larchwood Avenue, Elbron R-1. This application is to re-subdivide two lots to create three new lots. These lots are a result of a previous subdivision where one large lot was subdivided into three vacant building lots and the large lot, the larger lot, which contained a residence, a horse farm remained. Jennifer Krimko, would you like to start?
Good evening, Dr. Di Benedetto and Mr. Chair and members of the board, Jennifer Krimko from the Law Firm of Vancel, Grimmon, and Aaron here on behalf of the applicants. What I'd like to do, if it's okay with the board, is just give a brief overview. And then, well, typically for the more complex applications, it's been the board's policy to have Bill and Jim read their reports and after the application proceeds, as was discussed, I understand, at caucus. My request is, is that once I give my overview, to turn it over to Bill with regard to Bill and Jim's report, because that will really shorten the testimony that's going to be provided, because we're going to be agreeing with most of what's in those reports. So is that okay with you, Dr. Di Benedetto?
Yes, of course.
Okay. So by way of very, by way of very brief overview, this board or some of you who've been here for a long time and others of you who have not, this is property on Larchwood Avenue, near its intersection with Park Avenue. And historically at 65 Larchwood was a large horse farm, operating horse farm. Years ago, the then owner came in and subdivided and as was put in the agenda, created four lots, three new building lots that fronted on Larchwood, as well as the main farm lot, which I'm going to call as the farm lot. The two lots that are the subject of this subdivision are the farm lot, which is Lot 6.11, and the northernmost lot in the aforesaid subdivision, which is Lot 7.11. And basically, what we're proposing to do is re-subdivide the property to create, it's currently two lots, to create one additional building lot. And in doing that, we're going to be reconfiguring some of the existing lot lines for Lot 711. The reason being that the owner of Lot 7.11 is the contract purchaser for the adjacent Lot 6.11. He has signed in as the owner for the property. The remaining mother lot or farm lot will be approximately 11.8 acres in size. The reconfigured Lot 7.11 will be about one and a quarter acres. And the new Lot 6.12, which will be just sitting just south of that on Larchwood, will be approximately one acre. All of the lots that we're proposing conform as to the ordinance with regard to the bulk criteria. We're not seeking any variances with the lots, however. This application has been ongoing for quite some time, and I personally think I met with Bill on this at least two or three times in tech review, and I think my engineer met in addition. The reason being, and this is just the preface to Bill's report, is it's obvious that at some point in the future, the farm lot will be, likely be re-subdivided further to create a subdivision. And before any new lots were created, what Bill is requiring that we do is engineer the stormwater as if the entire parcel was being developed to show that it's completely feasible. And what we did was, we submit, we submitted a conceptual drainage plan to show the full buildout. And our, and I'm sorry if it's confusing and it'll all make sense, but this is the context you have to understand it. And so, so as, as part of the application before you, we're proposing to construct a basin to support the two lots on Larchwood. And then we're proposing to do the engineering for the full buildout, subject to Bill's approval. Um, what I'd like to do is, I'm going to turn it over to Bill and have him explain it. And if you don't mind, perhaps maybe I could put one of the plans up, I'll move that in, so while Bill's talking, it might make a little more sense. Amy, if I could share my screen?
Yep.
And then as A1, it's the subdivision plan. Wrong one. I'm sorry, stop screen sharing, let me, I'm sorry, Amy, could you allow me to do that one more time?
Sure. Says you still are, you can't hear it.
Oh, okay, now I'm able to, now I got it, I'm sorry. So as, as A1, it's the subdivision plan, prepared by Patrick Ward, dated 1/15/20, revised through 12/22/20. And I just put this up here for, so it makes sense in the context of what Bill is about to offer in his report. Bill, is that sufficient background?
Yes, that's fine, that's really good.
Okay.
Okay, so. Oh, sorry.
Bill, can I just add one more thing?
No, yourself.
Okay, and this is just procedurally, so i-in order to satisfy Bill with regard to the, um, in order to satisfy Bill with regard to the, the fact that the drainage will work one day if the farm lot is ultimately subdivided, he required us to obtain an outfall into this, into the drainage system on Perrine. So a-as you'll see in the notice and as you'll hear Bill talk about it, Lot 33, which is 260 Perrine Avenue, was included in my notice because the ultimate buildout and even for the smaller version includes an easement to connect to the town's drainage system through this lot on Perrine. And I just called that out because it's going to, it may come up as part of Bill's letter, and I just wanted to point it out. I'm sorry, Bill, go ahead.
Okay, so if I may, Jim isn't here, so I'll be reading his report or the relevant parts of it, and, and my report, but if I may, if you simply look at the screen that's up there right now, the lot at the upper left, which you can read it, but Jennifer has her picture on it. That was a lot that's been there that is being reconfigured. The lot below it is the new subdivision lot. If you go directly below that, you'll see an extension of the inside farm lot, if you will, that fronts on Larchwood Avenue, and that's 200 feet of frontage that she was talking about. Below that, there's a little crosshatched area, and below that, which you don't really need to see, are the two lots that were created years ago and developed. So what we're left with is essentially what you see on the screen. And I have a slightly different take than Jennifer does, but let me read Jim's report or the salient parts of it. I don't know, let me see if he re-numbers his reports. Under the analysis, on page one, I don't know, by the way, yes, your reports, I'm reading the one dated January 20th, they're from it. So the analysis on the first page, we simply just talked about and summarized. So I'm starting on the top of the page two of the, that's, that's also dated November 17th, on the top of page two at the upper left. The current subdivision creates new Lot 6.12, we just said that, which is located just to the south of 7.01, that was the old number, and is formed from a small portion and is subdivided off a Lot 7.01. Okay, so then he tells you the results. And you've just seen the results, so I think we can eliminate that description because it's in front of you, picture's worth a thousand. The subdivision creates no new variances. I disagree, the subdivision creates a variance for a change of grade, and, and so it's something the board needs to consider in grant or not grant.
Yeah, Bill, he updated his report to call out that variance, he wasn't aware of it on his first review, so his second
This is what I have in front of me at the moment, I understand that.
Okay.
I don't know what else to say, I'll, I'll get there. Okay, so the creeping major subdivision is of interest, but there's nothing illegal that I'm aware of about it. What he's saying is that this started out a bigger piece, now it's, if this is approved, it's going to be five lots. And as Jennifer mentioned, the interior lot, which is something like nine acres, is going to be possibly, probably more lots in the future, but there's no guarantee. What Jim is also saying, and it's a technical issue, but it's not anything terribly serious, is that this subdivision, as Jennifer mentioned, is going to connect to the drainage system that exists in Perrine Avenue. And so that is an extension of municipal facilities, which regardless of the number of lots, one, two, it's a major subdivision, not a minor subdivision. That's only a semantic thing, and I'll assume applicants amending it on the fly to be a major.
That's fine, yeah.
This is where Jim and I agree, and, and you need to be aware. I'll read his letter verbatim. "My primary concern with regard to planning issues is that the remainder of the overall tract, that's new Lot 6.11, is a candidate for future subdivision into a number of smaller lots. The frontage of Lot 6.11 is 200 feet, which would allow for a 50-foot wide access road and a new corner lot with 150 feet of frontage on Larchwood Avenue. Such a configuration would create a condition where either Lot 6.12, which is the one above the extension of the inside lot to Larchwood, or Lot 4.01, which is the lot previously subdivided and developed, would be, become corner lots, changing existing side yards to front yards, increasing zoning restrictions on the new corner lot, and possibly creating setback variances for the principal structure or existing accessory structures." The applicant has anticipated this possibility and has designed the required 50-foot side yard setback on the south side of new Lot 6.12, thereby eliminating the situation where a principal structure could be made conforming through the construction of the new street adjacent to Lot 6.12. "My recommendation is that any resolution of approval require that one, any street accessing future development of Lot 6.11 be located adjacent to Lot 6.12, and two, the 50-foot side yard setback of Lot 6.12 be treated as a front yard with respect to regulations governing any accessory structures, including fences and hedges. Probably should also apply to principal structure. I also recommend that the wording on the plan designate that 50 feet setback as a required front yard in order to avoid confusion in the future. I went further than that in my report and required that these lots be deed restricted to do just exactly what Jim said. "It also should be noted that Lot 7.11 requires four street trees and currently has no street trees installed. The most recent resolution involving the slot waived the installation of street trees for a two-year period from July 24th to 2017. The reason was to allow some relief to the property owner, but to avoid the situation where existing street trees grew to the extent that new street trees were planted that were noticeably smaller than existing street trees. The two-year period expired nearly 10 months ago, and the existing street trees have one full summer, I believe it's nearly 22 months ago. The two-year is my recommendation that the street trees be planted now and that they be a minimum of four-inch caliper to be consistent with the existing street trees along this side of Larchwood Avenue. It is also my recommendation that any future development on Lot 7.11 be subject to the tree replacement requirements of Section 21-55.2.8 of the ordinance with regard to tree preservation, and that any future development on Lot 6.12 maintain the existing street trees in front of that lot. There are no other trees on proposed Lot 6.12, so that it's not necessary to require compliance with the Section 21-55.2.8 with regard to tree preservation." Jim has a further report dated January 25th. Analysis, in addition to the comments of my January 2021 report regarding the basic subdivision, has come to my attention proposed grading of the drainage facilities creates a variance for change in grade as well as additional tree location and preservation requirements. In this regard, I have the following comments. 21-20.16 Soil Removal. "The ordinance requires a variance for a change in elevation of more than two feet. Proposed grading for detention basin has numerous areas where the change in grade is greater than two feet. This regrading has significant impacts on tree removal. As best I can tell, the total number of trees to be removed for the initial drainage improvements will be 31. It appears that an additional 40 trees will be removed to accommodate full buildout of the drainage facilities. This does not any, include any trees that will will be required to be removed as a result of road construction and individual lot development and full buildout. Consequently, there is a potential for significant negative impacts resulting from the loss of trees as a result of this grading, regrading. I defer to the board engineer with regard to the technical aspects of this variance. Waivers. Tree location of 21-55.2.8.1, tree location and preservation plan. The ordinance requires a tree location and preservation plan that locates all trees on disturbed areas of the site that are six-inch caliper or larger, and requires that each qualifying tree that is removed be replaced by one four-inch caliper tree, two, two-and-a-half inch caliper trees, or a donation of $350 to the Township Shade Tree Fund. No tree location and preservation plan is provided." I'm getting over a cold, Sandy, that's why I didn't want to go to Town Hall.
Ah, okay, understood.
No worries, we'll get it. Okay, so he's got several sub-paragraphs under here. "The minor subdivision grading plan indicates a removal of approximately 31 qualifying trees for the construction of the initial drainage facilities and a removal of approximately 40 additional trees at full site buildout. All of these trees are located to the immediate south of existing residences that front on Perrine Avenue. These trees provide substantial afternoon shade for these residences, and their removal without adequate tree replacement could have significant negative impacts, not just for visual concerns, but for shade and potential energy consumption during summer months. It should be noted that the plans, particularly this thing popped up on me, I need to get it out of my way, I can't stand it. There we go. "Should be noted that the plans, particularly as they relate to existing tree locations, are difficult to read due to the fact that the trees and other existing site conditions are shown in light graphics. Due to the amount of information on the plans, it is difficult to determine by visual inspection without benefit of survey equipment if the tree location information on Sheet 2 of 3 of the engineering plans is currently accurate. It is my recommendation that a tree location and preservation plan be provided that addresses the drainage facilities as proposed at full site buildout, and that the plan provide adequate tree replacement along the northern portion of the site in order to maintain an adequate visual environment and afternoon shade conditions for those properties to the immediate northwest of the site. If the board is comfortable, this can be done subject to my approval and that of the board engineer."
So, Bill?
Then I have a report dated January 22nd. Yes.
Bill, before you go on to yours, I just want to stipulate a couple of things having to do with Jim's report, if that's okay. Um, the first one is, we did submit a detailed tree removal. We don't have the tree preservation, and as we'll hear from your report, we will provide that and we'll provide it on a separate plan, so it's easy to read and easy to understand. Additionally, after the, um, one of the TRMs with you and at the request of the current owner of Lot 7.11, if the board and everybody can see on here, there's currently an access easement being shown on the northern edge of the property. We're actually proposing, it was your suggestion actually, Bill, and I'd like to introduce as A2, an alternate access easement and modified drainage exhibit. And as soon as I find the button to lower it, I mean to make it small, and what this does is, instead of having the access easement along the northern property line here, it puts it in the existing driveway through the existing farm site and into the proposed basin area, which we'll hear the testimony to, but what that does is, it saves 11 trees that were previously proposed to be removed as part of this application, that are no longer need to be, be removed. So those are actually remaining. And then lastly, with regard to Lot 7.11, I can't speak for Mr. Sutton because he has his attorney here, but I can tell you, he's in the process of developing plans for the, um, for the construction of his property, which will require a change of grade greater than two feet, which will put him back to the board, so it may be when we conclude, his attorney may want to speak to the timing of when those shade trees have to be planted, knowing that that property will be significantly regraded. The four trees in question were the four trees that Mr. Sutton was required to plant as part of the original subdivision approval. So I just asked that we defer that until the end. And I think that that addressed everything, and I think your report will now really talk about the balance of it. Still there, Bill?
Bill, you're muted.
Yep, okay, I got it, I got it.
Okay.
I'm not going to get back up, bear with me. Okay, so my report is dated January 22nd, follows Jim's two reports. And item one does not need to be reread, and item two, I think everyone understands that this neighborhood is generally developed, although not as intensely as it might be under the ordinance. Item three, I will preface my re-engineering review with the following, I have no objection to the board approving the subdivision, provided the following issues are discussed and agreed upon between the board and applicant in terms of agreement incorporated in the board's resolution, which shall be appended to the filed deed for each lot if, when the subdivision is perfected. Any issues that I have concerned are discussed in following paragraph four through, I think about 10. Four, this is a major development under state municipal stormwater management regulations, and I provide you with the definition. "The subdivision creates three new tax lots, all of which can be developed or redeveloped under the current land use development and zoning ordinances. As such, may ultimately provide for disturbance of one or more acres of land. As a result, both water quantity and water quality requirements of the stormwater management regulations apply to the three proposed lots of this subdivision." Five, and this is where I said I have a slight difference of take on this, because I think we're saying sort of the same thing, but maybe differently. "The full buildout conditions and solutions are referred to as conceptual. This is something of a misnomer. Under the current ordinance, this 11.78 acre tract is allowed 7.95 acres of impervious coverage, whether it is one lot, three lots, or 30 lots. Accordingly, the drainage and stormwater management design must be finalized for that condition. The actual construction can be tied to the installation of impervious coverage across the site via homeowners association and approved phasing plan and detailed construction specifications. The required documents are largely technical in nature. Consequently, I have no objection to the board approving the subdivision subject to finalization of the documents in all respects and the satisfaction of the board's professionals. The board and applicant, however, must agree upon all parameters to be incorporated into the documents." My point is that regardless of the discussion, Lot 6.11, which is nine acres plus, can be developed with 30 tennis courts under the ordinance. Does it not need a subdivision to do that? But my position is, because it's part of this subdivision, created this year, after stormwater regulations, that all of, anything done like that is subject to stormwater management, which is why I'm saying what I'm saying. I don't care if it all goes into the same time, but it all must go in to mitigate any, any further increase of impervious coverage.
And we're saying the same thing, and, and I think that an easy solution would be that if the board were to approve this, it would be subject to providing the fully engineered solution for the full buildout of Lot 6.11. However, construct, any construction or implementation
Okay, I think that's what I said.
Until the building permit was, was sought. The reality of it is that no one's building 11 tennis courts on here. The development of that site, and I understand what you're protecting, which is why I have no problem with the condition, because and then ultimately, when that property is developed in the future, they'll be required to come back to this board for an approval, and either they will seek an amendment to that, or they'll just say, we already worked it all out, let's go. So we're saying the same thing, I'm calling it conceptual because we're not seeking any development now, and we're not seeking to, to construct the full basin, but we are stipulating that should the board approve the subdivision, we would provide the full engineering to address the concern as raised in number five of your letter.
Okay, item six has to do with the location of any future access to the large Lot 6.11 being required to be deed restricted to be adjacent to the northerly lot rather than the southerly lot that joined the
And we're fine, we're okay with that as well. That, and, and Jim was correct, part of the reason why the setbacks were shown the way they were is it was anticipated that new Lot 612 would be the corner lot. So we're okay with that as well.
Item seven. "The drainage collection system that is constructed should be, should be designed to accommodate a future subdivision. In that regard, A, the two proposed A-inlets should likely be E-inlets and located along the future curb line, which is 10 feet from the proposed lot line. So this would be along any entrance driveway into the interior of the site from Larchwood Avenue, so that they may be readily converted to curb type B inlets, assuming that a roadway would be curbed, which it would. And B, the drainage easement along the common lines of all three lots must be a minimum of 20 feet in width and should be centered upon the pipe. It is recommended that the pipe be located five feet from the common lot, boundary lines or common lot lines, I left the word out. So the fencing can be set immediately adjacent to lot lines." The variance, eight, "The variance for change in elevation pursuant to 21-20.16 obtained from proposed stormwater management basins. Purported grading also results in substantial loss of mature trees. Applicant must justify the stormwater basin location and resulting tree loss. The trees provide shady rear yards and homes of north-facing properties along Perrine Avenue. Nowwithstanding ordinance requirements as to mitigation for tree removal, granted, the variance should be conditioned upon a reasonable percentage of the compensation being in the form of planted trees rather than monetary donations to mitigate impacts upon adjacent north-facing lots along Perrine Avenue." Nine, "TRM Technical Review Meeting to Discuss Subdivision Design was conducted in December. The recently submitted drainage design and stormwater management report do not appear to incorporate discussion items of that meeting. Accordingly, the stormwater management plan will not be reviewed and evaluated in detail at this time. It is noted that the 11.78 acres of this property provide more than, more than enough area for a three-lot subdivision and stormwater management for allowable impervious coverage of the resulting lots. The design must be satisfactorily finalized." Ten, "A 20-foot wide drainage easement, excuse 10, a 20 foot wide drainage easement, excuse me one second. A 20 foot wide drainage easement is proposed along approximately 420 feet of the northerly line of proposed lot 611. Jen, you want to show where that is?
Yeah, I am. I'm just, I'm trying to, I just have to do that because the, there it is. So here it is, right here. And this is A3, and this is what we have entitled the conceptual build out. And that was submitted, and let me just see the.
Okay.
That's the conceptual grading plan for full build out revised through 12/22/20.
And this will permit a drainage connection for our future development of adjacent lot 10 to the east. While I have no engineering objection to this concept, and I say parenthetically, it was discussed during a TRM of several years ago, probably three, I have substantial concern with the location of the easement as well as the combined impacts of both potential developments upon existing shadow lawn manner drainage collection system within Wilson Avenue. A, adjacent lot 10 has an approximation, approximate area of 14.6 acres. That's about 24% greater than the area of the track presently being subdivided. It can reasonably be assumed that the drainage stormwater impact system for development of lot 10 will be in greater, it will be, well, I should say greater than those of the current matter in proportion to the difference between areas of the tracks. It's my understanding that the shadow lawn manner drainage system is presently inadequate with periodic intersection flooding occurring along Wilson Avenue. C, as to this matter, it must be determined that the existing system can accept managed runoff from this proposed development. Given that the current proposal is for a pair of parallel 30 inch pipes, which have a combined capacity of about 42 cubic feet per second to connect with an existing Perrine Avenue inlet drained by a 12 inch diameter pipe capacity, in the best case, five CFS, that appears unlikely. No analysis of the receiving system is provided within the reports provided. As to future development of lot 10, the same is applicable. Notwithstanding downstream system capacity to subject easement location can result in substantial impacts upon owners of Perrine Avenue lots, depending upon the timing of construction related to developments. Constructing a drainage pipe within a 20 foot wide easement area is far more impactful in, in terms of duration and construction noise, particularly the backup alarm on all construction vehicles, than constructing the same pipe across an open field. It would be a less impactful design if the easement was moved southerly away from the lot lines and so as to not impact any tree plantings, any future tree plantings or those required by the board is what I meant, along the common boundary of this lot and the joiners. So those are the items that I care most about.
Just a few things that we can stipulate to, and I'm going to just leave this up. With regard to, I had already indicated, we can stipulate to number five. We can stipulate to number six. We can stipulate to number seven. With regard to number eight, um, we can certainly stipulate to whatever percentage of tree replacement the board wants to be planted as, wants to be planted as opposed to payment in the fund. Typically, as you know, the board, the ordinance allows the developer to pick either or, but since we do need the variance as it relates to the change of grade, uh, actually, which any, any application that has a detention basin would require, um, we are willing to plant, to give up that option and allow the board to instruct us what percentage should be planted versus what can be paid into the fund. With regard to number nine, we will comply. With regard to number 10, Bill was kind enough to, to have discussions with us. And if you look, the board, he's talking about this easement area right here, and we're agreeable to moving it as far south as practicable to still serve its purpose to the adjacent lot 10 and get the drainage into the basin. So we are agreeable with that condition as well, even though there's nothing in the ordinance that prohibits us from putting an easement like this along the property line, recognizing that we do need the variance for change of grade, we are willing to concede that. Um, with regard, and finally, with regard to the remaining items, certainly, we would be required to show that there's capacity in the municipal system for both the portion that we're proposing today, which is the development of lots 711 and six, I'm sorry, 611 and 6112. But we would agree as a condition of any approval that we demonstrate that while we're not constructing it now, um, we would show that the basin, that the existing infrastructure can accommodate the anticipated future growth that we're showing as part of these plans. So effectively, we can comply with just about everything in Bill's letter. And then lastly, Bill, I don't know if you put it in your letter or not, one of the things that we were agreeable to is to the extent that trees are coming down on the north side for this basin, that even though they're not on the Perrine Avenue properties, they're getting the benefit of them, the replanting that we would be doing as a result, we could congregate those along that northern property line and agree to put that in and do that first. I think that's what we discussed, Bill.
Yeah, I think that, um, I don't know if the board can see my cursor, but.
No, they can't.
Probably can't. I don't know what's these, okay.
Just tell me what, I'll be there.
I think everybody can. Well, I, along that common property line between the proposed full build out detention basin and the lots to the north. What I'm proposing, it can be done in stages, but basically would be the following, starting at that property line and working onto this property, the slope should come up at about a four on one pitch, which is not outrageous by any stretch, general relative immovable with a walking mower. And that, to the, I think it rises for about four feet. I know it varies because the gray, I don't believe it's any more than four feet anywhere. That slope should be planted with a lot of the trees, in my opinion, that would make up the tree mitigation plantings. Okay? And they should be trees basically that have taproots vertically downward as opposed to spreading roots, kind of like oaks versus maples. Maples, if you have a nice sugar maple in your yard, you may chase the roots, you know, 50 feet from the tree, or an oak, you'd have to go 50 foot down kind of a thing. That would allow a lot of things to take place here that would be not detrimental to anybody. Okay? So that's really my concern. And then the easement, rather than being right along that property line, because so much depends on timing, but no one that's involved in this with this particular tract or the tract to the east can guarantee the timing of development of either piece. But my point was if that, all that construction has to be fit into 20 feet right behind someone's small residential rear yard, it would be a nightmare if you were sitting back in that yard. So to the extent they're willing to move it away, that's really, Jennifer's correct, there's nothing that says you can't do that, but the fact that they're willing to move it away is certainly a benefit to the people that live along Perrine. And, you know, appreciate.
And we're happy to do that. We can't say exactly where, but if the board were to approve it, we would hope it would be subject to your review and approval on where it works.
Understand the need to get the water piped and out to Perrine. And I also understand that Perrine has some issues now, but it's, in my opinion, a whole lot better to have this water piped to the maximum extent practicable than it is to have it flowing across the surface of these residential lots, as it has a tendency to do now and has for a long time. So I see a lot of benefit to the system, and certainly I'm not going to try to make you move that easement to a point that would kill the potential benefits of the system.
We're, we're comfortable moving it to the south away from that property line and it can still serve its purpose.
Does anyone from the board have any questions?
From the public? Yes, or just the board? Okay.
The board, I'm sorry, the public, we're not ready to ask questions from the board, from the public yet. This is just the board members. I have a few questions. So Jennifer, your location of the, this basin, this stormwater basement, why is it, why did you choose that particular spot?
I need to introduce my engineer to answer that. I can't, I'm giving you the overview, what we're going to stipulate to. That's an engineering testimony that I intended to introduce my engineer for. I just, I felt that it was more important to let Bill do his thing first.
All right, let's have, let's have Mr. Blue raise his right hand. He promised to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so hope you got.
I do.
Thank you.
Eric, if you could state your name for the record and give the board the benefit of your educational credentials that qualifies you as an expert in the field of engineering.
Will do. So Eric Blue, I serve as a partner at Insight Engineering here in Wall Township. I have a bachelor's degree from the University of Massachusetts in civil engineering, and I've been doing numerous land development projects for past 25 years or so. It's been a while, but I did appear in front of this board in September of 2019 in a live format I greatly missed. So I have testified in front of this board before as well.
All right. Mr. Chair, Dr. Chair, we'd submit him as an expert.
Okay, we'll accept.
So Eric, having had most of the hard work already done by Mr. Fitzgerald, um, first, before we do that, I just want to go to the alternate access plan. This was prepared by your office and it shows moving the access easement, so it's on our new lot 611, which is the farm lot, which takes it out of the northern portion of lot 711. Um, and I had indicated that that should save around 11 trees. That's what it says on the plan. Could you just confirm that?
That's correct. Our originally submitted plans required 37 trees to be removed. The alternate design requires only 26 trees. So it's 11 less trees will be removed based upon the alternate design.
Okay. And when we're talking about this, Eric, just so it's not confusing, right now, the construction we're proposing now is just the drainage necessary to allow for the development, where my cursor is, of these two lots, lot 711 and 6.12, correct?
Correct. Jennifer, I can't see the plan display.
Oh, I don't have the screen on. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Hold on. My apologies, I forgot, I took it down. I can't see everybody when it's up, so that's why. I'm sorry. So what I was saying was, the basin that we're about to talk about and the trees that are being removed is just the construction necessary to enable us to create this new lot and in order to provide for the appropriate drainage for anticipated development of these two lots. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And I'm indicating here in the shaded area, that's the new access easement that goes off of Larchwood into the basin area, and then the lighter shading is the actual drainage easement with the 20 feet wide being from here to here.
That is correct.
You had heard that I stipulated to agree to all of those things in Mr. Fitzgerald's report, is your understanding that we could do all of that?
I believe, I also concur that we can accommodate all of the requests that were discussed to this point.
Okay. So from a, from Dr. Di Benedetto asked the question, and since water goes downhill, where's the lowest, is, is the basin being proposed in the low spot of these properties where water currently is directed?
It is. So the, the property has the low points of the property, the lowest elevations are along that northern property line. And also the, you know, the swale that sort of brings the existing water out to Perrine is also in the location of the easement that we're proposing. So by proposing the basin in the lowest part of the property, it sort of leads to the least amount of disturbance for stormwater management. And that's what led to our selection of the location.
Okay. And the same goes, and I'm going to go back to the, to the full build out one, and you just have to excuse me one second because of the way that, I just have to close it and then open it. Okay. And so on the full buildup plan again, when looking at, right here, my cursor's on lot 10. Currently, the way the grading of lot 10 is, it, does the grading go in a westerly direction to this low point on lot 611?
Correct. So the, the natural low point for our lot, the farm lot and the other lots is a low point in that area. Also, lot 10 drains to that low portion as well ultimately. So we are maintaining existing drainage patterns.
Okay. So what we're doing and the reason we're granting the easement here is not for any development we're planning on our proposed property, it's to facilitate the development on the adjacent property, recognizing that with that, that, that that's the only way for that lot to actually drain. And this was something that Mr. Fitzgerald pointed out to us several years ago. So this easement, right. So this easement we're providing is really to accommodate development on the adjacent property, but we're willing to relocate it further to the south to get it out of the backyards of Perrine Avenue?
That is correct.
Okay.
We're, we're willing to do the four to one slope suggestion for that area to allow it to be planted. I, we don't see any issues with doing that.
Okay. And since that area needs to be planted anyway, based on Mr. Fitzgerald's letter, um, do you have an objection if whatever the, we're going to, let me just stipulate, we're going to comply with the tree ordinance requirements in their entirety, but would you have an objection to planting whatever replacement trees we need to plant along that property line in an effort to rebuild up that, um, area with trees?
I don't see any engineering reasons why that wouldn't work. So I agree that that solution seems like a good solution.
Okay. And that's notwithstanding any other tree planting that would have to be done should this large lot ever be redeveloped. This is just for the purpose of assessing the drainage, the drainage basin.
That's correct. This is for stormwater management purposes only, the tree removal.
Dr. Di Benedetto, did that answer your question?
Yes, in part it did. I had, you know, so where would you be proposing the easement? You said to the south, but it's arbitrary. So what do you mean?
Okay. So accord, what, what Bill had suggested, and this just came in Bill's letter today. So right now, can everybody see the shading? I don't know how clearly you can see it or if I need to make it bigger. Can you see that?
I can see it, yes.
Okay. So right now, the easement is proposed here, right along the property line. And what Bill had suggested doing is locating it in this area here, and it really is going to be dependent on the technical aspects of the drainage and the grading, but locating it here, so then this whole area could be burned and landscaped with any future development. And then all the construction and everything is moved to the south by at least 20 additional feet, probably more.
If, if you do do the full build out of this drainage basin, how many trees in total will you be removing?
Um, there's a to, for the basin itself, it would be a total of 65 trees for the basin.
And they're all mature, big trees, correct?
They are. They're not all in great health. We plan on with our tree report to provide that as per the tree removal ordinance. You know, part of the reason I can, one of the reasons I can stipulate that Bill said to me, why he wants to get those planted sooner than later, is that a lot of them aren't in good shape and they could fall down before then. So he wants to see something planted there. So that was part of the reason why we agreed to do that first.
Is there, um, any thought to maybe moving it more southerly to preserve some of those big trees?
There isn't. And the, the reason being that ultimately that might happen, because remember, any development of this site will require the owner to come in and seek approval. This is just to ensure that should the owner of the farm decide to go crazy and cover seven acres in impervious coverage, that there'd be a plan in place for the, for the, for the drainage. But again, for this lot to be fully developed and subdivided realistically, they're going to have to come before this board and get an approval. So my, my guess would be that the configuration of the basin will ultimately be fine tuned even further, once they come in for a subdivision for that lot.
Why not build out the entire basin from the get go?
Honestly, and that's something that, let me take this down just so I can see you. Um, you know, that's one of the things that I spoke.
Please.
What?
I'm going to ask you to put it back up again a little while. It's okay.
I will. It's just, it's very hard to focus when I talk to someone when they're that much smaller than they already are now. So one of, the reason for not doing the, the full basin now is twofold. One, it's not necessary. So it would mean going in and taking down all of those additional trees now when it's not necessary to. So.
Yeah, well, the reason why is, isn't, can you put up the picture of the smaller basin?
Yep, here it is. Oh, I forgot, sorry. I'm not, um, share screen.
Amy, could you share a screen with?
There, oh, I got it. Here it is. So all of the trees to the east over here
Right.
would be taken down now when the only thing we're constructing is right here. So that's why we're not proposing to do the full basin now because.
And is there a berm surrounding the entire basin?
No, not now.
No.
There is no, yes, so when it is, per Bill's suggestion, per Bill's suggestion, if as and when that basin gets constructed, and again, we're talking about potential development that hasn't even been submitted for an application yet. But if as and when it does, the berm would go here in the area where the proposed easement is now.
I understand, but on the small build out, will there, will there be a berm encapsulating this whole basin?
There's only a berm on the northern side. So the northern side's the lower side. So there's a berm on that side only. And then the grades get higher as you get towards the south, which sort of creates the impoundment. So the berm aspects are really along the northern side more than.
Sorry, but Eric, in our, in our build out of, let me in our, in our proposal for our grading for just the small basin. Are we burming the northern property line as it relates, yes, so as it relates to that basin, are we proposing a berm right here?
Correct. There's a berm along the northern side as well as smaller berms on the eastern and western side.
Okay, so, so Dr. Benedetto, yes, there, there, it is somewhat burned. But this basin would have to be put in immediately in order for these two lots to be developed. And I know that, I know that the owner of this lot is in the process of preparing those plans right now. So this would be constructed in the near future. The larger berm, which would require taking down all the remainder of those trees may never need to be constructed if nobody ever develops this property. So I, I don't, I don't see the purpose of taking down trees for a development that isn't even planned yet.
Well, on your proposal of your conceptual, so how many trees are you going to take down with this, with the smaller, with the smaller basin?
I believe it was 26, right, Eric?
26 is correct.
Okay. Does anyone else from the board have any questions for the engineer?
Bill, did you want me to leave this up?
Yes, if you would. Please. If I may, just one thing for the board members. It's not easy for me to, to point it out, but as we talked, the water runoff, surface water runoff from Lot 10 comes onto this property about 80 feet into the site near the north, the upper right or northeast corner of the property. And if you look at the series of symbols that are representing soil logs, they're kind of like a circle with a two quarters of it opposing each other and then shaded in. That's approximately the path that water takes across this property. And, and, and what it also does do, believe it or not, before it gets to the low point that was testified to near where the drainage extension is, it flows across part of the rear yards of lots 31 and 32. So the, the proposal to, to relocate the basin close to the northerly property line rather than at other locations. And other locations are feasible as to stormwater. But it, it sort of intercepts that water and gets it off of those two lots, which is a bit of a benefit for them, unintended consequences, but a good thing. So, you know, it's something else to consider when you're weighing all the options for this.
So Bill, I have a question for you.
Sure.
How do you feel that this proposal of the small basin will affect the, the houses on Perrine Avenue?
Well, there's no question that, you know, drainage wise is probably a positive. Okay, I've talked about the the capacity of the downstream system that exists. But quite frankly, under state, current state and municipal stormwater management regulations, the flows from, well, by law, the two, the 10 and 100 must be reduced substantially to 2 to 50% of what it is now. The, the 10 to 75% of what it is now, the 100 to 80%. Those numbers were not chosen just for the heck of it. That was a lot of early eighties research by the Soil Conservation Service to determine that if they mitigated the two to 10 and 100 in that fashion, it would in essence mitigate every other storm. So typically speaking, the runoff reaching the drainage collection system that exists in Wilson is going to be less if this is developed than it exists now. And that would be whether it's the partial basin or whether the full basin, Joe, because the partial basin is mitigating any impacts of development of the lots on, that front on Larchwood and the remainder of the lot isn't changing. Of course, they have to analyze the timing and everything with that because the statute is water leaving the, the site or the property. So that, that, everything has to act in tandem. So I'm not at all concerned about drainage impacts. There is going to be some impact with tree removal, which can't be avoided. That's going to be the low point where the water leaves. There's going to be, whether you move to leave the basin there or move it to the south some. There's going to be some impact right along that line and by way of trees, no matter what. I, I don't know that that's avoidable. So my thinking is, why not get, rather than have them be able to, I, I know the ordinance is written a certain way. But in the case of a variance, we can sit here and discuss it as we did. Rather than have them be able to make, donate contributions to the tree fund to mitigate the trees being removed, have them plant them in a place where it makes the most sense, which is where you're impacting adjoining properties.
And Jennifer, you are going to present a tree preservation plan or tell us about what, what trees you're going to plant there?
No, what I, what I was going to say is, is that per the reports, we were going to, if the board would approve this, we would agree to comply with the tree ordinances. Um, we would submit the plan that shows what would be removed and what would be planted, and it would be we're not asking for a waiver. So yes, we'll provide all of that information.
You know, I don't, I, I'm not sure how the rest of the board feels, but I would like to see that plan.
Okay, the, the plan is just going to be the location of where these trees are going to be planted. I, I think part of the problem is, Dr. Di Benedetto. This owner wants to develop his lot and he can't until this gets, keeps moving forward. So that's part of the reason, perhaps if the board were to vote on this, we could have the plan submitted to you as it relates just to the small lot. But I'm sorry, the, the small area before any resolution is adopted, and then you would have the opportunity to review it.
Uh, yeah, I mean, it's, I, I'm concerned about, obviously concerned about tree removal and, and tree plantings and having that adjacent to those homes on Perrine. And so I'm just concerned about that.
Okay, well, and, and, and that's understood. And typically something like this, I, you know, knowing that Bill and Jim are probably harder on us than the board is most of the time would go to them. But if you want to, if you want to see it in advance, um, you know, that, that's certainly fine. We could do that. But I would ask that if, if that's the only remaining issue is where the trees are going to be planted for the construction we know that we're doing, which is the small basin, then I would ask that hopefully we could move it forward so action could either be taken tonight and memorialized subject to, or that action be taken so there could be memorialization at the next meeting.
I, I don't think that the board can, can take an action subject to compliance with what Dr. Di Benedetto is asking for. I, I think that the only way it could happen, if you, if, if the board wants to agree to expedite it is to ask me to attempt to prepare resolution memorialization. You submit your revised plan. At the next meeting, we reconvene the hearing. It would be a short one. You would show the plan. The board would indicate if it's satisfied or not. And then we could have a resolution and the resolution memorialization at the same time.
Okay, and we're jumping ahead obviously because it hasn't been open to the public yet. And I know there is public that wants to comment. I was just talking procedurally, but that's, that's certainly, if, if you'd like to see a planting plan for the tree replacement in advance of any formal action, we understand that.
Okay.
And that was going to be my request, provided it was, the board was anticipating acting favorably, but foreseeing that plan was to ask Sandy if he could do that.
Any other board members have any questions?
I have a question. I have a question for Bill Fitzgerald. So, um, the new stormwater regulations that we put through, are these in effect for this particular development?
The new, the current stormwater, there's newer ones, I believe, Dave Cummings, March 2nd. They just require a maximization of green infrastructure. Okay, so this particular development, if you will, falls, because they have a complete application, falls under the current stormwater regulations. And this will meet the same rate reduction requirements as even the new ones would have. What it allows, what the new ones require differently is it mandates a green infrastructure. Which means now that if the bulk lot, the big lot, the 611, which is nine plus acres, comes for a future development, it will obviously fall beyond March 2nd and be in the, the newest regulations to be, that we anticipate being in effect then, and, and that would be that.
Okay, because we.
This means all of our current standards.
Okay.
Good.
Yep.
Does anyone else have any questions? Estelle, are you trying to talk? We can't hear you.
Can't hear you. Estelle, can you call in to Ron? And advise Ron what your question is? He can repeat it on the record. Can you do that, Ron?
Sure.
I think her screen just lit up. It might be working now.
Can you hear us, Estelle? No.
No.
And you call.
She's got the same problem I had. I think she's got the same problem I had. The microphone locked because of this program.
So while we're waiting for Estelle, can I ask another question of Bill?
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, so are you comfortable with these, the amount of water that's going to be running off from this particular development? That we're not going to create a bigger problem in, down the road when we go to develop this other tract of land? I mean, is this going to be, I don't want to create like a super storm where down the road, we're dealing with a, a real mess. But somebody wants to develop that other section over there.
Are you, okay, so Dave, when you say the other section, you're, you're talking about the big part of this lot, the 611, which is nine acres here, or the, the 14 acre piece to the east? Or both?
Well, both, I guess, sure.
Okay, so water is, right now, Jen, could you get that map back up there again?
You got it. The big one?
Yeah, the one with the pipes and, and.
Full build out.
Doesn't matter which basin, I don't care.
I love this close.
Whatever's good. Full build, that's fine.
Can you see it?
Yes, that's fine. Okay, Dave, so right now, water leaving this site goes roughly from the bottom of your screen toward the top of your screen and out the area where they're showing a proposed pipe. And, and water from Lot 10 to the east comes across your screen from the sort upper right onto this property, across the middle of the full basin, a little bit onto the lots to the north, but then out that same path again to Perrine Avenue that the proposed pipes are. So right now, all of the water leaves these two tracts and goes out that swale, if you will, that goes right down the middle of those two properties where the pipes are. And that water leaves at a certain rate. And both of these lots are largely grass, if you will. Certainly before analyzing stormwater runoff. There's not forest anywhere. I know there's a stand of trees back here, but it's still not forest. So there's a fair amount of runoff coming off of these properties. In fact, if you walk in and think carefully about what happened, it's been there for a long time. That lot, shadow of a matter, because I lived there for 10 years, was developed, right, I think the subdivision plat was filed in 1922. And, and there were, there was a lot of the lots were developed soon thereafter. So I think people realized that the water was leaving these properties and heading down across lots that face Perrine. And that topography there alone, that common boundary is a little odd. I know you can't see it through all the lines in this drawing. But it looks to me like somebody built berms once already to try to direct it to that one spot and then out to Perrine. Water, because of the stormwater regulations and the required reductions in flow rate, water will leave the site for every storm going forward at a lesser rate than it does now. So the development to some degree actually benefits the Perrine drainage system because it's going to lessen the rates at which order gets there. There are other impacts that have to be studied as part of this is required by state and local like, for example, impacts on groundwater and basement flooding and that kind of thing. But from a point of view of surface runoff, Dave, I, I'm perfectly comfortable well, that they will meet the standards to the T and, and that there will be actually less runoff by rate. Volume is different. Volume may trickle for a longer period, but the rates will be less than are there now.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Did we get the question from Estelle? Estelle gave us a thumbs up. Does that mean Ron Kirk is going to rely it?
Mrs. Lewis was, was asking if the entire property were to be developed, are they meeting the stormwater standards? And the answer is yes, we're, we're making them meet the standards if it will be, to be fully developed.
Okay. Any other questions from the boards? Mr. Krimko, do you have anything else you would like to add?
No, Mr. Chairman, now we need to open this up to any members of the public to ask questions of the engineer.
Yes. Yes. Anyone from the public? Like to, uh, ask any questions of the engineer? State your name and your address.
Just to clarify for those who haven't been on the board, this will be, uh, questions only. If you want to make comments at the end of the hearing, will be put under oath. And, um, that will be a little later on in the proceeding.
Okay. Can I have a question? But I also have a statement that I must make at the end. Um, my question is, my name is Lisa. I'm at 56 Larchwood, directly across from this development.
And what's your last name, please?
Shabbett. S H A B as in boy O T. Okay. Okay. From Park Avenue down to Old Farm Road on Larchwood, on both sides of the street, we have frontage of 200 feet. Each and every home is equal in that frontage. Whenever it was divvied up years ago, that was the frontage that people, uh, bought. We all have the same property. Even though I see that, I don't know if it was changed to a 150 foot minimum, it makes a tremendous difference to us aesthetically. It makes a tremendous difference in this case now. Um, if you've ever driven down Larchwood Avenue and you see the sizes of the homes, they're massive in comparison to someone like me who has a smaller home. Um, we are all very concerned. I have a lot of people not only listening on this call.
I have to, Dr. Di Benedetto, I have to object and just ask Ms. Shabbett to only give, first of all, she's, if she, it sounds like she's giving a statement, so I'd ask her to be sworn in.
I'm asking, I'm asking why, why?
Let me, if I can just finish my, if I could just finish my objection. And then secondly, if you could ask Ms. Shabbett to limit her comments only to her comments as opposed to making representations about anybody else.
Well, we're, we're not in the comment section right now. So Ms. Shabbett, this is a question for, uh, the engineer. You'll have time to make a comment or a statement at the end of the proceedings. So right now we're just questioning, uh, the engineer. And do you have any questions for the engineer?
Oh, about storm drainage? No, not about that. I was just strictly about the frontage allotment. So I guess I'll wait. I don't know. Or is somebody going to ask, or somebody, does he answer that question for me? Why? Why these two lots are go, the two lots, uh, are going to be under the 200 foot frontage that every other home areas?
Yeah, he can, he can answer that question. Eric, the question, 150 foot frontage, that's what's required by the ordinance, correct?
Correct. And, and the R1 zone, the minimum frontage is 150 feet. One lot meets 150 feet and one lot exceeds that dimension. So these lots are fully conforming with lot frontage.
Was that, and one, my follow-up question, and then I'll, I'll, uh, stop. Was that changed recently or that was always? Because it just seems a little unusual why every home was built to a 200 foot frontage. Uh, I'm not, I, I'm not privy to that information.
I can tell you, it, it wasn't recent. Bill, do you have any idea if that was a change or if it's always been 150? Where Bill go?
He's there.
Bill. He looks like he's, uh,
He looks like he's frozen.
Yeah. Oh, he doesn't have an answer right now.
Okay. But, but I, 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 I'm not, I'm not aware of a zone change in this zone. And this application has been going on for three plus years. And I was involved in the one before that, and I'm not aware of a zone change in the last that many years. This has consistently been the zone requirement.
Okay.
All right, Dr. Di Benedetto, we can now ask if anybody else, uh, who's a member of the public has any questions of the engineer.
Any other questions for the engineer? Okay. Um, Ms. Krimcrow, do you have any other, uh, experts that you would like to bring forward?
No, I would just, uh, close, uh, close my case subject to the ability for any closing statements after public comment.
Okay. I think we can open it up to the, uh, public for commentary.
And I'm back. Okay. Should I?
Okay. Now, uh, before you, uh, start with your comments, uh, under procedure, we need to have you sworn. So, uh, would you raise your right hand, please?
Yep.
And tell us, all right, do you promise to tell the truth or you do affirm that you will tell the truth to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
Well, first and foremost, I want to thank everyone who serves on the board. As someone who has served over many years, I know firsthand, it's not always easy. Nonetheless, you're here to listen to concerns by homeowners who actually live in the area where these concerns directly affect us. I'm speaking for myself. Uh, I want to give you a little bit of a background of Larchwood Avenue. Larchwood Avenue is a narrow main thoroughfare for Monmouth University students, professors, workers, and delivery drivers. Starting from as early as 6:00 AM and running through the whole entire day and into the evening, cars and trucks constantly go up and down the street. Even though the speed limit is 35 miles per hour, we've all seen drivers blow past that number. Larchwood is a straight road, and because of that, it is a passing zone on both sides for the majority of the street. Getting in and out of our driveways has always been challenging. Each and every house that's built on this street adds many cars to the mix. If you've ever driven down the street on a summer night, you run the risk of having people over and then, and therefore cars parked up and down the block. The township finally enacted a no parking on one side, and that eliminated safety concerns with ambulances trying to go through. I've spoken personally to the survey company who came out to mark up the, the property, the main horse farm property. We know that, that this, I don't know if this is, okay. I happen to know that the landowner's property is going to join with another landowner around the corner to make it a bigger property. It directly, okay, it directly affects Larchwood Avenue. I believe, uh, for the driveway that you were talking about going in and out of that development, if it does get developed, is going to cause an absolute nightmare for a narrow street like Larchwood Avenue with the traffic that we have due to Monmouth University. Obviously not now due to COVID, but when things do go back to normal, I invite each and every one of you to come and take a look what goes on on this street. My main concern obviously was the 200 front, front, uh, footage, frontage of each of the homes to keep the continuity and the look that's always been there. I personally am sad to see that the horse farm is, is going away. I understand that, that progress has to go on and money has to be made. I just wanted my comments noted for the record, and I do appreciate your time very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public would like to make a comment or statement?
I would if I could be heard.
Uh, state your name and your address.
Emily Hidayea, 7 Old Farm Road.
Ms. Hidayea, uh, would you, uh, raise your right hand, please, and confirm that you have raised? Okay. And do you promise to tell the truth or do you affirm that you shall tell the truth, uh, as to any statement you're going to give tonight?
I do.
Thank you.
Uh, I just wanted to make a quick comment as a, a resident here of over 30 years. I don't know if you're familiar with the area, but I am perpendicular. Old Farm Road runs right, right off of Larchwood. And, uh, I do also have concerns about traffic patterns affecting Larchwood. As it is right now, it can't really hold much more traffic thoroughfare for people cutting across from Cedar to get to Park Avenue. And I'm just concerned with overdevelopment or changing of zoning. I know this doesn't change the zoning. There were other projects that were discussing changing zoning, but just the overdevelopment of the area. Moved into the area, it was more of a horse farm and it was more of a rural country type setting. And, um, I would very much like it to remain, you know, have integrity. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public would like to make a comment or a statement?
Yes, I, yes, I would like to make a comment. My name is Steve Cornman. My name is Steve Cornman. I live at 54 Larchwood, next to Lisa. And I agree with Emily and Lisa on, you want me to raise my hand first?
Steve, hold on.
Please. Promise to tell the truth, or do you affirm that the testimony you will give tonight will be, uh, the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyways, I agree with Emily and Lisa that, uh, it would ruin the aesthetics of the neighborhood that I've been living in for 20, 40, 25 years or so. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Would like to make a statement?
Um, you know, can I say one other additional thing? There were, there are, there are other people in the area. This, this happens to be
Would you, would you state?
Oh, sorry. Lisa Shabbett.
Thank you.
This meeting that was postponed so many times since the summer now happened to have fell on what we call intercession week. Uh, for, uh, a lot of people that this is their vacation. We do not get, uh, Christmas and New Year's off. So, so many other people I know would have a voice and an opinion very strongly surrounding neighbors, uh, about this situation. And I can't, I mean, obviously you're not going to let me speak for them, but these are our family, our friends. We all have the same, and living on Larchwood Avenue, and we all have the same concerns with the traffic.
Dr. Di Benedetto, well, Dr. Di Benedetto, while I, while I applaud Mr. Shabbett for her attempt to get that in, again, I have to object. She can't speak for anyone but herself. So I would ask that the board not consider that statement.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you again.
Excuse me, can I say one more thing? This is Steve Cornman.
Go ahead, Steve.
Okay. I don't know if you understand what intercession is. We, we, most of our kids go to a religious school, a Jewish religious school. They don't get off the regular holidays. They're not here now. Many of them went away. So we would like to have this meeting again where you could have more people from this neighborhood address their concerns about this social construction. That's all we're asking for.
Now, now that Mr.
They'll be back, they'll be back next week. They'll be back next week.
Mr. Cornman, I just have a question for Mr. Cornman since he was sworn and he did offer his testimony. Mr. Cornman?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you, are you aware that this application we're seeking approval for is not looking to construct, not looking to develop the farm lot in any way, except for one additional lot next to Morris Sutton's lot on Larchwood?
Morris Sutton is a friend of mine, and I'm not, I'm not aware of, I'm not aware of what you're trying to do. I was just invited to listen to this meeting and I listened to this meeting. And I, I have my opinion. I gave you my opinion, but I
Mr. Cornman, Mr. Cornman, you, you, you offered testimony. I'm allowed to ask you. So again, are, your, your objection seems to be with the potential development of the horse farm, the remaining lot and a roadway coming from that remaining lot. But are you aware that this application is not proposing any of that construction? This is only to create one additional lot for Morris Sutton on Larchwood.
I understand that. I'm not opposed to the one extra lot. I'm opposed to the, the, the street that you're planning to build.
We're not planning, and again, we're not, just so the record's clear, we're not planning on building any streets. If someone wants to build the street and if someone wants to develop the lot that you and Mrs. Hidayea and Mrs. Shabbett seem to object to, they'd have to come back to this board for an approval to do that, at which time you would be noticed again and you'd have the opportunity to speak at that meeting. We're not proposing that now.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to get my point across. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? I'd like to close the, uh, public commentary.
Do we have a second or not?
Second.
On the roll call or?
Amy on mute.
Mr. Dufelia?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Close? Mr. Ciano? Mr. Ciano?
I don't see him anymore. Oh, there he is.
Well, we only need a majority, so, um, why don't we just go through the rest of the, uh, list?
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Dr. Di Benedetto?
Yes.
Okay.
His ass is.
So, Dr. Di Benedetto, just by way of very brief summary, recognizing the neighbors' concerns are with regard to a application that's not before you, and that would be the further development and subdivision of the farm. And recognizing that, um, the, there are no variances required for the new lot that's, we're proposing. And we've agreed to comply with the board engineer's review letter and the board planner's review letter. I would ask if it would be appropriate, unless the board has an objection, to ask Mr., uh, Mr. Brown to prepare a resolution for the next meeting, for adoption, provided you're satisfied with a tree replacement plan that we will submit 10 days in advance of that meeting as it relates to the construction that is being proposed, and that's the small basin.
I, I just had, I just had one question that I wanted to ask you, Jennifer.
Sure.
You know, the, the, uh, public raised some questions about the frontage, and I know that you, you have the ability to have the 150 square, uh, foot frontage. Would it be, would you have a problem with making that lot 180 like the other lot, the adjacent lot?
Yes, I would. We, we can't do that. We're contractually obligated under this lot size. Um, it's fully consistent with the ordinance. So, no, we're, we're proposing 150 foot lot there.
Okay.
And I have a question for you, Jennifer. Uh, you indicated, uh, no variances, but, um, uh, are you not seeking a variance for soil removal?
We are. I said the lot sizes have no variances. The lot we're proposing has no variance. The drainage we're required to put in has the soil removal.
Right.
For the change of grade for 20 feet.
So that is part of your application. And likewise, uh, as part of the application, at least based on Jim Higgins' report, there was a waiver, but are you indicating that you're, you're, you're not asking for a waiver anymore?
No, we're not asking for that waiver and that information, the, the tree removal was part of the plan, albeit it wasn't on a separate plan. So we're just going to extract it, put it on a separate plan and provide for the board's review before the next meeting, the proposed tree planting for the basin we're constructing.
Thank you.
Hey, Jennifer, can you please explain to me how you're contractually obligated, obligated not to change the lot size?
We have a contract, we have a contract to pursue the lots in this configuration. We offered to sell it. We have a contract to sell them a certain amount of frontage. So to change that now would require us to revise that contract.
So you're telling us that we're supposed to bend to you rather than you bend to us?
We're not asking you to, no, Mr. Duffy, we're not asking you to bend at all. We have an application that doesn't need variance with regard to frontage. The only variance needed is with regard to change of grade. So, the, the, the creation of the lot is permitted as a matter of right. The only variance has to do with how we're handling the stormwater.
It's, so just to follow up with that, is, is, aren't you changing the grade of these two lots?
No, that's not part of this application. If as and when these lots get developed, that homeowner would have to come in with their house plan, whatever pool and everything else they want to do, similar to what we did to the, the lot to the south. If you remember the application of Abraham Aitis, we came in for that.
The only, the only way, the only, not to, not to interrupt you, but I'm, I'm gonna interrupt you because I, I know where you're going, but I don't, so the only way to really make you conform, or ask you to conform to making, changing the lot would be to not grant you the variance. Is that correct?
Not grant me the variance for what?
Because we, we don't feel like it's consistent with the neighborhood.
Well, respectfully, if, if you, you want to have that, let me rephrase that. The answer is the denial of the variance we're seeking, which is for the change of grade, would have to be with specificity as it relates to the change of grade and the impacts of that change of grade. We don't need a variance for the lot frontage. So, the ordinance has already defined what the character of that neighborhood is. So, to deny the variance because you don't think the lot frontages are within the character of the neighborhood would be, in my opinion, arbitrary, capricious, unreasonable, because the denial would have nothing to do with the variance being sought. We don't, if we needed a variance for lot frontage, I agree with you 100%, you could deny it if you felt that the lot frontage wasn't consistent with the neighborhood. But if we need the ordinance for lot frontage, you can't deny a subdivision because you feel the lot frontage isn't consistent.
Okay, Sandy, is that correct?
That's correct. There'd have to be a tie-in between the variance that is being sought and the reason for requesting or demanding an expansion of the frontage.
Okay. So, you're in agreeance, Ms. Krimko, with all of Bill Fitzgerald's recommendations for this site?
Yes. Yep.
And Sandy, you're able to prepare everything for the next meeting?
Yes.
And then Jennifer, you'll present us a tree layout, preservation layout of trees that relates to the basin?
The basin we're constructing, yes. We would defer, obviously, because we haven't fully designed the other basin. That would be a condition of approval. We defer that till when it's actually developed. But we'll absolutely give you that as it relates to the basin we're proposing to construct.
I have a question for Bill. Bill, are you able to talk and hear at this point? Oh, I s.
I'll go with no.
Are you remedying that, Ron?
Bill's having a frustrating day.
He is, and evening too.
My earlier comments were not wrong.
Yes. Well, i- i- if Bill can't get on right now, my, my point was to just confirm with Bill that he is comfortable with. He's on the phone with you, Ron?
Yes, what would you like to add?
I wanted to see if Bill can affirm that he is comfortable with the board passing a resolution, possibly at the next meeting, subject to what Dr. Di Benedetto was speaking about, with all these conditions that will, would be in a resolution being conditioned subsequent.
Hi, can you hear me, Sandy?
I can barely hear you, Bill. Did you hear what I asked?
I did.
And the answer is yes, correct?
Here we go. Try this.
Well, Bill, you have a comfort level that.
He actually, he actually wrote it right in his letter.
Well, I'm asking you to confirm now that you heard all the testimony.
I, I agree with you and with what Jennifer said regarding the variances. This lot, these lots conform to frontages, et cetera. However, in the, in the future, to go to other points, no one should be able to go to either board and claim they can't develop one of these lots. Of course, this doesn't have enough depth or this or that as a hardship. Because it's being created. The argument is it conforms to the zoning, that's fine, but there's no hardship down the road. The other thing that I was going to ask Jennifer, she said they'll give us the tree plan 10 days before the next hearing. It doesn't take that long to put a tree plan together. And 10 days before the hearing, there's no room for any discussion, give and take, move this, move that.
Um, Bill, you'll get it way before then. We're gonna, that was, that was the, the minimum in case of another pandemic hits. We understand the statutory requirement. We'll get it to you much sooner.
So, to answer your question simply, Sandy, if the board is comfortable, I have no problem because I know we can get what we want. I just wanted to be sure I understand what the board wants, because that, you know, what I want.
Fine, you answered my question. Thank you. All right, back to you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, so let's, let's adjourn till next meeting.
What's the date?
I think it's February 22nd, 2021.
Without the need for further notice?
Correct.
Thanks, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Do we have any other business, Dr. Di Benedetto?
I'm sorry.
I just wanted to extend the time through the 22nd for the record.
Thank you.
What did you say? I, I don't believe so. I think we can call the meeting.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn? You can second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please, Amy?
Roll call, please, Amy?
Mr. Dufield?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes. Is that for? He said Pete, yes, I just heard music.
Mr. Weinstein? You hear me?
You have a mute, Bill?
And Dr. Di Benedetto?
I was, sorry, yes, yes.
Yes.